This is being come to order, today is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Do you have any introductions here from Tim?
Oh geez, you'd think in that room out there full of those people I could find one. Um, no sir.
Okay. Our invocation today would be by Pastor Jesse Lyles from Willis Hills Baptist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be by Councilman Shiska.
Father God, we just paused at this moment before this important meeting to say thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day, and thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live in this town, everybody's hometown, we thank you for that. But Father, we know that this town, like all the others, have issues, they have to deliver and listen to, so we thank you, Lord, that you give listening ears to our council members here, and help us to reason together and think together and come up with some solutions, Lord, we thank you for that. Thank you for your presence here today, as we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, with particular note of Memorial Day coming up, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
Do we have any announcements? Chief Manager? Okay, we'll move on to proclamations. You want to read A, please?
7A, proclaiming June 14th, 2017, as 242nd birthday of the United States Army.
Well, I spent thirty-three years in the military, in the Army, so I thought I'd read this one. I've got a lot of friends here with VFW, and I'd like to ask anybody that served in the Army, currently serving or in the past, that would like to come up here and join us, please step forward. Now, we're supposed to have a representative from the second of the Army here today, Mario Diaz, and he may show up a little bit, I don't know, but this proclamation was going to be provided to him, but I'll go ahead and read it, and I'll give it to our high folks here, and they'll say a few words if he shows up, maybe he'll have an opportunity to say a few things off of it. Hey, everybody up here that wants to be up here? Proclamation, 242nd birthday of the United States Army, June 14th, 2017. Is everybody here, be okay? Do I need a few more? Whereas, on June 14th, 1975, the Second Congress, representing the citizens of 13th Virgin Colored, authorized the establishment of the Continental Army, and whereas the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the New Nation, basic principles and values in the Constitution. Whereas, for the past 242 years, the Army's central mission has been to fight and win the nation's war, and whereas, the motto of duty, honor, conscience is a key creed by which the American soldier lives and serves, and whereas, no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflict, the nation can rely on its Army to produce well-trained, well-led, and highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted to them. Whereas, members of the city of Prescott can proudly serve and make the ultimate sacrifice for our nation's freedom while serving in the United States Army, and our branches of military, nation's military. Now therefore, I, Harry Ober, the Mayor of the City of Prescott, to hereby proclaim June 14th, 2017, as the United States Army's 242nd birthday, and encourage the citizens to recognize and honor the United States Army and the dedicated soldiers who have served in it for over 242 years and have been in existence, especially on this day. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed as 23rd day of May, 2017, by Harry Ober.
I'm particularly proud to be standing here with Staff Sergeant Johnson, active-duty sergeant, and we were talking before, and we both served with the 4th Infantry Division in Fort Carson, Colorado, although it was forty-five years apart. But I'm very proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the veterans in Prescott, on behalf of the VFW, the American Legion, the disabled American veterans, and Vietnam Veterans of America, and all the veterans in our community, particularly the soldiers. And for a lot of people who may not be aware, the City of Prescott has a very direct connection with the creation of the United States Army. Our namesake, William Hinckling Prescott, by which we are named, his grandfather was Colonel William Prescott, who led the defense of Bunker Hill against the Battle with the British in Boston, and his great-great uncle was Dr. Samuel Prescott, who was one of the three riders, along with Paul Rivera, who were able to warn the militia in Concord and Lexington that the British were coming. So we have that very direct connection with the creation of the United States Army. So I'm proud of that. A couple of words?
Yeah. I'm not a big marketing bull kind of guy. My name's Sergeant Johnson, I'm one of the recruiters here, so it's an honor to be here today, because there's a lot of bad days in recruiting, but it's cool that I've actually had a good day, I'm gonna remember this one for sure, to be a part, be in the presence of like, the people, the soldiers that came before me, and then me enlisting the future. So it's kind of, it's one of the bittersweet moments in my career that I really enjoy. So I gotta say thank you guys for coming out here and, you know, let me be a part of this, normally one of the other recruiters comes, but he asked me to come today, and I'm really happy he did, because it's always nice to be, you know, I like being in the spotlight a little bit again. It's nice being the center of the tent in a good light, and like I said, it's just the honor to be in front of everybody, and like I said, be in the presence of the soldier that came before me. So thank you guys all again, I really do appreciate this.
Hey, John.
Hi, John.
Thank you.
Henry, you want to come up here? I just have something to say, in the construction business, there's two things you know, payday's on Friday, and you know what, rolls downhill. I have the honor to, for this proclamation, of National Public Works Week. Whereas, the theme of public works connects us. May 21st through 27th, 2017, marks the 57th observance since 1960 of the annual National Public Week, National Public Works Week. Say that five times fast. Whereas, public work services provide our community, are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and solid waste collection. Whereas, the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, the efficiency and dedication of personnel who staff the public works department is materially influenced by the citizens' attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Harry Ober, Mayor of the City of Prescott, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th as National Public Works Week. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to adequate themselves with issues involved in providing public work services, and to recognize the contribution that public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much for acknowledging us this day, this is a great day, it's a great week for public works, this is really at international level. A few things, the fact that most people take what public works provides for granted, it's a good thing, meaning that you don't have issues or problems. I want to talk about a little bit about your life, in the morning starts with public works and ends with public works. In the morning, when you wake up, the very first thing you do is either you wash your face or take a shower. When you go use the toilet, you flush it, it goes down. That's the sewer services provided by public works, make sure that it works. When you take a shower, that precious water is provided by public works. When you go out to cook inside to your kitchen, cook your breakfast, you generate some trash. That trash is collected and managed by public works. You're done with your breakfast, you're going to go to your work, your business, you're driving on roads that are built and maintained by public works. You stop at a stop sign or a traffic signal, those are all designed, built, and maintained by public works. When you have a snowy day or a snowy night in the morning, when you wake up and your roads are magically clean, that's no magic. Public Works employees have worked all night to make sure in the morning your roads are safe and sound. When you have a flooding issue during monsoon season, we have slides, erosion, people call, public works employees are there to help you out. So many other things that public works really can do. When you come home, again, you do your cooking, you generate your trash. The very last thing you do is brush your teeth before you go to bed, using the water provided by public works. So you see, it's all about public works, in the morning, at night, and everything in between. And none of this can be provided without the hard-working and dedicated people we have in public works, and without the support of the mayor and council. So I want to thank you all. Mayor, with your permission, we have, oh, Mayor is not here, Mayor Pro Tem and the council. We have one short video and another really short video if you want it. The second one, we brought it back because of thousands of millions of demands from the last year. With that...
That would be a good thing, Henry.
Thank you. I hope you're having a great day so far. This week is Public Works Week at international level, so we're going to talk about public works. Did you know that there is not a day that goes by and we don't deal with public work services? From the very early morning that you wake up until when you go back to bed, it's all about public works. My name is Henry Hesch, I'm Public Works Director. I hope next time that you go by some of our employees that work outside, you wave and smile, and maybe a little thank you, and thank you. Thank you, we had, it's up to you, we have, another one is less than one minute, we only bring it up because of high demand, and Mr. Lamar hasn't seen it from past years. Maybe show that as well? One minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
APWA presents, Public Works Saves the Day.
Oh my, what a beautiful bird. It's a beautiful day, isn't it, young man?
Yes, it is ma'am. Yes, it is.
That's up to you, public.
Okay, after that entertainment, we'll move on to presentations.
8A, Prescott Frontier Days Annual Report.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for letting me, giving me the opportunity to present this presentation of the Prescott Frontier Days, the world's oldest rodeo. Okay. Our, the 2016 rodeo, 129th Annual Prescott Frontier Days Rodeo, our committee this year added 109,000 to the purse. We had all, every top cowboy in the country, all the current world's champions, and with their entry fees, the total payoff for 2016 was $252,218. So we're in the top forty rodeos in the country, the Prescott Frontier Days is one of the top forty rodeos in the country. We have, as I said, every current world's champion and every cowboy. The all-around cowboy at the 2016 rodeo was a Texas cowboy, Jojo Lamont. We had over 600 contestants this year, and of course, we had top stock contractor, Harry Vold, from Colorado, that has provided the stock here for many years. Wrong way. You can see by our ticket sales, we had a very successful year. Every year has gotten higher and higher, and this is a credit to not only our Board of Directors of the Prescott Frontier Days, but we have enjoyed having Lewis Marketing, a board, doing a lot of great marketing for us every year, and it looks like, that could be a wall right there, couldn't it? Down by no gallows, maybe. The True West Magazine was named us as the best historical western rodeo, and that was the world's oldest rodeo, and we were very proud about that. You can see that our ticket sales and our attendance, we had five sell-out crowds last year, with 100% sell-out, even standing room only, with the three others not too far behind. So we enjoyed a great, great year. Again, we were recognized at Frontier Days as the official, officially named one of the thousand places to see in the United States and Canada before you die, but all of us here, we're lucky, we live here. Again, we had a great turnout for international attendees this year, there was representatives from 20 countries, and we were very tickled to always have a lot of foreigners here at the rodeo, and they really like to come because of the fact that we're the oldest rodeo. You can see here, some of the dollars that we feel like are big dollars in improvement to rodeo grounds, but you know what, I'm not going to elaborate on that, but I've got another part of our new renovation that I want to talk to you about. A must-see festival in the 50 states, the US Today, Arizona Prescott is the hometown of the world's oldest rodeo, so we're again getting recognized all over the country. Some of the contributions we do every year to the community, we do over $12,000 to different cancer funds, and the good thing about our program is all that money stays locally here in Yavapai County. We also contributed to the courthouse lighting, you can see the annual Kiwanis auction, we donate the arena to the 4H, we donate the arena to the Arizona High School and Junior High Rodeo Association, we donate the rodeo to the Arizona Junior Rodeo Association, and we keep those events going, usually all May is when we do all those events prior to our rodeo. We're great partners with the Heritage Zoo, Happy Hearts for Exceptional Children, we do that the first performance, and of course, we give, we work real close with the Fippen Museum, the Charlotte Hall Museum, and the Smoke Eye Museum. And you can see, of course, some of the other donations that we do, we stay very active in the community, we try to keep our queens and our Board of Directors out among the Chamber of Commerce and out in town periodically all year round. Year-round economic engine, again, we talked about the high school rodeos and junior rodeos that we put on, the big ropens we put on, the World Series roping, and of course, the last two years, we've enjoyed having the fair there, and that's brought up our attendance a lot, and I think every year, the fair is just going to get bigger and better for not only the Prescott Frontier Days, but of course, for the Yavapai County Fair also. The Prescott Frontier Days takes great pride in all the stock that we have, the care that the cowboys do for bucking horses and bucking bulls, and all the horses that are involved, and all the animals that are involved. The animal welfare thing is a very important part in Prescott for the Prescott Frontier Days, and you know, the life of a bucking horse, he travels around to make, all summer to these great spots like Red Bluff, California, Cheyenne, Wyoming, Prescott, Arizona, and they eat, the whole time they're there, they'll get bucked and work about eight seconds per rodeo, the rest of the time, they're traveling around the country. You know, I've always thought about it, but if there's anything as reincarnation, I wouldn't mind coming back a bucking horse, actually. We've had a lot of wish lists for the last few years, and there's been a lot of room for improvement at the Prescott Rodeo Grounds, and we are just so thrilled to have the new improvements of the rodeo grounds, it's been going on all summer, all winter long, thanks to the city, Mayor Ober, the whole, the whole deal, it was, been a great, great improvement, and we still haven't really seen the final thing. New lights in the arena, they lit up that arena like a baseball field now. Remember how down at one end, it was kind of dull down there? Not anymore. In fact, all the bar, the parking lots, all the way to the county building are all lit up, and we're going first class this time, and I think everybody's going to be mighty proud to go to the grandstand, go to the Prescott Frontier Days rodeo this year. It's really, I mean, I guess I can't tell you how much we've, and how excited we've been about it, it's been an ongoing thing, but when you look at that list of ongoing things, a long, long-term lease, well, by golly, thanks to the City Council, Mayor Harry Ober, Craig McConnell, Prescott Frontier Days President Joe Butner, it's all become a reality, and we got that agreement, and we're moving forward with a lot of new things, and this rodeo is going to become more of a part of the City of Prescott and more a part of Prescott, Arizona. That new lease was really important, as we... Here's a few shots of some of the improvements we did, the new lights were put up with that crane, of course, they tore a lot of the walls out and redid all the walls, some of the walls inside the grandstand, we did a great remodel in addition to our mercantile, the, the whole grandstand, it looks similar, it looks like it used to, but it's just newer and better and everything, when you hit a light switch, all the lights come on, that's an amazing thing. Do you know, the first year, 14 years ago, when I went to work for the Prescott Frontier Days, the maintenance guy was a volunteer maintenance guy, and he was going to be gone, and I had a big team roping going on, and I said, if it goes into the dark, what am I going to do? Well, let me show you how to turn the lights on. So you had to go up on the roof, and if you'll remember, up on top of the old roof where the old Smoke Eye Building was, which is no longer there, there's no more buildings on the roof. Well, you'd go up there, and there was a big breaker box, and a big fan there, first of all, you told me, plug the fan in, and it goes blowing on the breaker box, and hit all the switches. Now, what's a breaker box? Well, okay, what's the fan for? Well, to keep the breaker box from burning up. So down off the roof I would go, and you'd... So down off the roof I would go, and you'd go to every light pole and turn every light on. And this rope, and this particular rope, and one of those sheriff posse ropings, didn't get over till 2:00 in the morning. So here I was, the new general manager, up on the roof of the Smoke Eye Building, 2:00 in the morning, trying to get the fan off in the breaker box. So I guarantee you, we're going to really enjoy these new lights, for sure. Thank you very much. Uh, last year, 129th, we had a great year. Uh, we're looking forward to another really, really good year this year. Uh, the ticket sales are above and beyond, and we, we're doing so many different things with the Prescott Frontier Days, with the social media. As I said earlier, Lewis Marketing has done us a great job, and we are really looking forward to a big year. Uh, we've had the Harry Vold Rodeo Company with us for the last 45 years. In January, we lost Harry Vold. Harry was 93, and a great friend of mine. We were very fortunate to have a, a new contract signed with Harry Vold last year. So we're going to enjoy the, uh, Harry Vold Rodeo Company for another five years. And, uh, the rodeo world lost not only an icon, but a great hero to a lot of people. This year, our, uh, theme for the rodeo is Legends Live Among Us. It was a great idea. We really have enjoyed doing this. You know, we've got so many people and so many world's champions that have come out of Prescott, Arizona, that we don't realize. You know, back in the day, Mike Stewart, Prescott, Arizona, world's champion saddle bronc rider. Asbury Shell, world's champion team roper. Chuck Shepard, 1946 world's champion team roper. Arnold Jones, four-time bareback riding champion at Prescott and all-around champion. George Richards and Brad Smith, 1978 team roping world's champion. Arlie Bonnhaugh, top bullfighter, and as everybody knows Arlie around, the Yavapai, part of the Yavapai Tribe. Rick Kekeffer, NFR calf roper, and Rue Woolsey, NFR team roper. You know, we are very fortunate here in Prescott to have those kind of quality of rodeo cowboys represent Prescott, and Prescott has got a great name in the rodeo business. We're all very fortunate, I feel like, to be part of the rodeo business, as I am very part of the rodeo business, our directors, all our members, and of course, the city of Prescott is part of the great rodeo business. Makes me feel very proud to know that the rodeo business derived, is the only pro rodeo, pro sport that was derived from an industry. And of course, that was the cattle industry, which we have a lot of that around Prescott, Arizona, and the Yavapai County. And another very important part is, you know, the professional rodeo cowboy, the professional rodeo athlete takes his hat off and stands up for the National Anthem. And if, thank you very much. We're going to have a great rodeo. Is there any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions, comments for, or get, get one?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, J.C., I just want to say thank you for everything you do, and Joe, and your, your, uh, your board there, and Mary Ann, and everybody that brings this forward and, and keeping a tradition alive, um, but yet bringing it to the next century, so everybody on that social media and everything can, can hear about it and around the world. And as, if there's anything that, that I've been, been very proud of on this council as being part of that, so thank you.
Well, and I've got to say, we are very thankful to all of you and all the hard work everybody's done, not only, uh, the City Council, but our, uh, members and board members making this thing put together and, and making it all work. You know, I've been, uh, it's been a fortunate thing for me to be a part of the rodeo for the last 14 years. And, uh, I experienced the contestant side for, for quite a bit longer. But you know, it really helped me to, uh, get on the other side of the fence and experience the committee side, and, uh, it, it's more than just pulling up to a rodeo and riding and leaving. I guarantee you that, takes me all year long.
The only thing I have to say that I regret, I said hello to your stand-up cardboard guy at Walmart. I thought it was you.
Well, I guarantee you, Craig, you're not the first one. But thank you very much.
Councilman Blair's got it.
That's what those alcoholic beverages will do for you, Greg, I'll tell you. Um, J.C., thank you. And I don't know whether you have the number, or whether maybe Joe does, that you can share with the community, people watching, uh, what would be the economic impact to the city over those seven days?
Well, you know, there was a study done, and it's been quite a few years ago, by, uh, Yavapai College. And then they, the, for the seven or eight days that our rodeo goes on, for that, there, they had estimated around $12 million. But I'm glad you asked that, because, uh, along with the city and the Prescott Frontier Days, we've put together economic impact study that we're going to do during the rodeo. NAU's going to do it. We've organized that, we've put the kind of questions together and how, how they're going to organize this. And we'll get a true, modern-day, uh, up-to-date impact study. And I'm, I'm betting money, we're going to be really surprised on the dollars that flow through here because of the, the rodeo, the parade, the dance, all that is under our umbrella. And, uh, we're going to be, we're really looking forward to seeing this new impact study, and I think a lot of people will be real interested in that.
Thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chiskin.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, J.C., for a certain community organization and for Prescott Frontier Days, good enough just is the time.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
9A, approval minutes for the City Council meetings held on April 25th, May 2nd, and May 9th of 2017. B, award city contract number 2017-306 to Wetton Brothers Construction, Inc., in the amount of $11,763 to repair and replace siding on the Recreation Services Administration Building. C, adoption of resolution number 4385-1594 endorsing the application of the United States Veterans Initiative to the State of Arizona Department of Housing for grant funding to convert a commercial building to permanent supportive housing for homeless veterans and other community members in need. D, approval of auction utilizing city contract number 2017-256 with Harris Auction and city contract number 2017-257 with Ritchie Brothers Auctioneers to sell surplus assets. E, approval of the sole source procurement of one EnvironNex ChemPro 1001 Chemical, Biological, Radiological, and Nuclear Monitor in the amount of $15,595 plus use tax through the Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant. F, approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2017-18115A1 for various facility and building maintenance services in the amount of $40,000. G, approval of new holiday closure schedule for transfer station. H, adoption of ordinance number 5032-1570 authorizing the granting of a utility easement to Arizona Public Service Company. I, adoption of ordinance number 5033-1571 authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement from Arizona Eco Development LLC. J, adoption of ordinance number 5035-1575 authorizing the purchase of real property from the Roberta I. Schoenberg Trust for the Roster Storm Water Detention Basin Project. And K, adoption of ordinance number 5034-1573 authorizing the sale of a public right-of-way easement to Michael Ottman, and that's it.
Okay, we've been running from meeting to meeting today, and I haven't had an opportunity to ask the council if there's any, uh, item they would like to pull for, for the discussion? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 9A through 9K.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, second. Those in favor, say aye or vote.
Pass unanimously. Sorry, passed.
Easy for you to say, yeah.
And I apologize, I'm filling in for Dana, so I'm new to this, so please bear with me.
You're doing a good job, don't worry about it. Okay, we'll move on to 10, liquor license agenda.
Okay, before you this evening, Mayor and City Council members, we have four special event liquor licenses. The first one is approval of a Series 15 for Prescott Frontier Rotary Foundation. Event location is at Waters Garden Center. Applicant is Mary Jane Posinski, and the date and time is Sunday, June 25th, 5 to 8. Is Mary Jane present? Okay. Second one is approval of a Series Special Event for Prescott Frontier Days, Prescott Rodeo Grounds, and applicant is Christopher John Graff, and it's June 27th through July 4th, 8 to midnight. Is John here? Would you like to say a few words, please? Okay. The third one is a special event for Prescott, Prescott Frontier Days Community Service Foundation, and the location is at the BMO Bank Parking Lot, 303 North Montezuma Street. Applicant, Richard James Warner, and I'm sorry, I apologize for the names. It's the date is June 29th, 8 to midnight, June 30th, and July 1st, 10 a.m. to 11:59, and June 30th through July 2nd, 12 a.m. to 2 a.m. Is anyone here for that one? Would you like to say a few words?
... plays for Rich Warner. This is the dance that's going to be held down in front of the New Stroud.
Oh, great. And the fourth one is a special event for Arizona Distillers Guild, and also they applied for a fair festival liquor license for 11 applicants, and they're conducting sampling and selling at the event, which is going to be held at 300 South Granite Mile High Field, and that's June 9th and June 10th, from 5 p.m. to 11 p.m. Is anyone here for that? Okay, I ask for a motion and a second.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mayor, I move to forward special event liquor license applications, 10A1 through 10A4 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second vote, please.
It passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to regular agenda.
11A, adoption of resolution number 4386-1595 authorizing a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of certain land development code sign regulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Our office created a resolution for you that if approved, would temporarily suspend the enforcement of the City Land Development Codes regarding temporary signs on non-residential property and declare a moratorium until December 31st, 2017, to take a wait-and-see approach to see if that is something that is workable for you. Should the resolution be approved, we will be refunding anyone who paid permit fees since the beginning of the year, but I understand there may be a little wrinkle on that.
Yeah, it appears that there's some folks might have paid the permit fee before the January 1st date on the resolution, so if council is so inclined to pass this, they should refund everybody, even going back to the last quarter of last year.
Um, so this is one of those purely wonderful policy questions that you guys get to decide, and it's really meaty, and I'm going to turn the debate over to you. But what it pits is the power of local zoning versus private property rights. Currently, we only allow for one sign on commercial property, non-residential property for, as a temporary sign, up to 24 square feet. Uh, the change was a result of a U.S. constitutional case that came down a couple of years ago called Reed versus Gilbert, where the Supreme Court said you can no longer regulate content in any of your sign codes. Uh, prior to this, we had five or six different temporary sign, uh, content-based, um, uh, regulations, which we got rid of in, let's see, 2000, uh, November 15th, 2016. Um, this will not change, uh, the right-of-way ordinance that we have that says there will be no temporary signs in city right-of-way. That is going to remain. Since the adoption of the new sign regulations, it looks like there were four permits that we identified, there may be a few more. Uh, with those four, there were about $300 collected in fees, so it's not going to be a large refund if it's something you want to do. So at this point, debate away.
Question, counter, the counselor, uh, Mayor Pro Temp.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, number one, Matt, having served together for a long time, you know I'm a little bit aggravated with a lot of the things we have in the land development code and the hip and right along. Moratorium means temporary, I just assume get rid of the whole damn thing to begin with. Um, I think a lot of times that planning and zoning, unless it has to do with public health and safety, are an intrusion on private property rights and sometimes on the freedom of the property owner. Um, so I, I guess my point there being is if we agree to pass this resolution, that doesn't preclude us from bringing it back to revisit some of the things that are, that are in land development right now, that may also be intrusions on private property rights. And I do agree with you that the money that we've collected needs to be returned to those folks, um, just sharing a wheel. So go ahead and answer that one question.
So, yeah, that is a correct statement. You can change the local laws at any time. You want to change the local laws.
Thank you. I mean, the state hasn't taken that ability away yet, right?
Not yet, but I think it's coming.
All right.
Counselor, woman Wilcox.
Well, Matt, I would rephrase the issue as one of self-interest versus public interest. I would ask why this is even coming before the council. The staff report says there have been some complaints. I talked to Dana about that. They're not actually complaints, they were inquiries about, because we're in an election season, what are the sign requirements? And apparently, some members of the council forgot that, uh, we allowed the land development code to apply to temporary signs in commercial areas. And I recall the discussion about that, and John Palladini, City Attorney, uh, very clearly explained to us the impact of what our decision was going to be. I understood it, and, um, I had forgotten about it, frankly, but when my campaign team inquired about the sign requirements, uh, okay, $75 a permit on a commercial property, we can do that, we just have to raise money. It's part of the campaign expense. So to me, we're all on a level playing field. There are three of us running for election on the council. There are a number of other council candidates out there who are facing the same thing. There's a Citizens Committee advocating one for and one against, um, a ballot proposition, and they have to raise funds as well. But we're all on a level playing field, and to me, that's fair. Uh, the purpose behind having a land development code is to fulfill one of our budget goals, which has been in our budget document year after year, and that is to have Prescott be a beautiful city polished and clean. And I don't see how we can do that when we litter and clutter properties along major streets in a tourism economy with temporary signs. I think it, it's really detracting, and people do notice that when they come in. So I, I can't support this resolution.
Counselor Chiskin.
Thanks, Mayor. While I agree with your opportunity to object, Gene, I, I also think that when you do something that's not achieving the intended consequence, particularly what I consider on private property, which is commercial property, I think that we need to take another look. That's our job as council people, is to deal with unintended consequences in a logical way. And so my opinion is that while I was certainly on board for all of the consequences that we would achieve through taking signs, temporary signs out of public right-of-way, like I said, I, I do consider commercial property to be private property, and I think that's where I draw the line. And so I respectfully disagree with what you had to say, and, uh, I'm in favor of this moratorium. of this moratorium.
Counselor Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I agree with you as far as the right-of-way, and Gene, I understand what you're saying, but I believe that a good businessperson will take care of their place, but we, right now, we have violations, put aside the political arena that we're in. We have a business that wants to promote the rodeo, but yet their grand opening, they're in violation, and it's happening right now. And it's everywhere. It is prevalent everywhere, and they're not unattractive, but we're tying the hands of businesspeople and citizens on their private property, so I'm in favor of this.
Counselor Menore.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Gene, the reality is, you walk around town, drive around town, and there's a lot of violation right now of this. I remember this discussion, and I was very concerned at the time about holding on to the sandwich boards that were downtown for the pedestrians. I thought that that was something that really needed to stay. I also remember the signs on the benches. I was very concerned about that, and, but just, you know, a lot of this came up because of, you're absolutely right, because people going, oh my gosh, look, you can only put one sign on a piece of property, and, but take it to reality, Olsen's, Olsen's Business cannot put up a temporary sign that says, "We're having a two-week sale," without coming down to City Hall and getting a $75 permit to put up that temporary sign for two weeks. And if they have that sign, and they want to put up a sign that says, "We're having the rodeo, we're supporting, we're sponsors of the rodeo," they're not able to do that because that would be two signs. So it just seems that it's become a great overword, and I don't believe, any of us here in the dais, meant to have this go that far. When we voted this in, we voted that fees separate from the regulation, and so, you know, I'm with Steve. If you make a mistake, you know, you need to say, "All right, you know what, this was an overreach, and I think we need to refine that." So I'm certainly in favor of the moratorium, and I don't know if this means then, manager, that we go back and we look at and we get input from people that are, you know, do this all the time. I think we need to talk to them and get some input.
Counselor Menore, I've had some dialogues with sign makers, and there are some concerns about some of the limitations based on how the signs are cut, and I'm certainly out of my area of expertise about signage, but I would think that this would give staff the ability to look at this a little more globally. I don't mean beyond the temporary use on commercial, but maybe about size and the like over the course of the next few months.
And I'd like to add, you know, I lived for probably, I don't know, 15 years down in Scottsdale, I was principal down there, and Scottsdale got really restrictive on their signs, and it's beautiful, it's pristine, but it's almost sterile. So I think there's a point. That's not Prescott, I don't think, why we want to be tidy and nice and look good, and we're also about advertising a rodeo, we're, you know, we advertise Dancing for the Stars. We're always out there advertising so many things that go on in this community, and a lot of our nonprofits, that's how they get the word out, is through banners and signs. And I know, I'm with a Republican woman, and we're going to advertise that we're 75 years old, and we have a big banner, and go, "Oh my gosh, I think we actually paid the $75 for the permit." So, you know, this is an overreach, and I think we need to go, "Oh, made a mistake, let's make this right."
Counselor Blair.
I think it's, I think it's pretty easy to say, if we agree to this moratorium, we're all still on the same playing, fair playing field. Not one of us is getting something over another, first of all. Second of all, Willow Creek Road, the new urgent care, there are six flags that they have next to the sidewalks, those are in violation of the city code because they're in the city right-of-way. If they want to put those flags on their private property, that's their business, but in the city right-of-way, I think it's pretty clear and distinct that in the city right-of-way, they're illegal. But when you talk about private property, even though if I have a piece of commercial property and I want to put a sign up, I shouldn't be regulated by government not to be able to do that, as well as my own private property, my house, I have signs up there right now, and I will continue to have signs up out there because it's my private property rights to do so. So I think it's a pretty fine line, a pretty definite line, and I have talked to our code enforcement officer, he appreciates what we're doing here today because he has no way to enforce the existing code. Counselman Lozelle and I drove down Iron Springs Road and went Millivale Road to Grove Avenue. We counted from Prescott College all the way up Iron Springs Road, 26 violations of the city code. So when you start wanting to pick and choose, I think this is doing the right thing.
Mayor Protiem.
Thank you, Mayor. Here again, sometimes cause and effect, consequences and unintended consequences, it's just like, and I realize we're not going to talk about it today, but the alarm ordinance where we charge people for permission on private property, which is an alarm, on private property, and then we charge them a fee for permission to have it every year. It seems to me as though the freedom, which we just enjoyed listening about with the Cowboys, they're all here, the freedom in Prescott is eroding, and it doesn't need to erode. We need to defend the freedom of private property rights. There's a difference between private property and public property. And I happen to support the right of private property owners to do upon their property as long as it doesn't infringe on public health and safety, and the freedom of speech is an important issue also. And what some people might think is clutter and litter and everything else, other people might think is yard art, and I just, I'm just sharing it with you, that it's just not righteous to want to control other people's lives and other people's property. It's the same as a taking, only you're doing it through a legislative body.
Counselor woman Wilcox.
Our land development code regulates what people can do on private property. It regulates, we have a building code, we have land use codes, we have design standards. They're all applicable to private property. If you're really serious about protecting private property rights, let's get rid of the whole land development code.
We've talked about it.
Amen, now you're talking, I'm trying to get across here, maybe we do need to revisit this whole issue.
Okay, before this deteriorates any further, let me make a couple comments. Let me just say that, you know, when we make ordinances, sometimes we, today we got a pretty good crowd out here, sometimes we don't have hardly anybody, and so we don't get a lot of public input, and, you know, based on our collective wisdom up here, it sounds like a good idea, and we go ahead and approve it, and then, of course, it goes out there and meets the public, the real public, on a day-to-day basis, and we start to realize that there's probably some changes that need to be made, so I think that's what we're doing in this particular case. I'll also say that I've talked to a number of people that come into town, tourists, and they say that they really don't know what all is going on, they would like to have, you know, maybe a, some kind of a neon sign as you come in on 69 and 89 that would, you know, list the events that are going on in town so that they would know where they are, so that might be a bridge too far for us, but I think that the signs that we've seen in many cases are very helpful in helping people realize what's going on in town and getting to some of these events, whether they're commercial or they're nonprofit or anything else, so I think we're making the right move here today, and what I'd like to do now is open it up to any comments from the public. Come on down. Come on down.
I don't do this very often, so greetings, I can't even do that thing. I listened to Steve.
Give me, give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Pete Walter.
And where do you live?
1980, 1970, Acacia Circle, Prescott, Arizona.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? And just over the years, listening to Steve, listening to some of the other people here, it's been inculcated into me the protection of the historic value of Prescott in the state of Arizona. It's a big picture, and I put up a lot of signs, I've put up some of yours. There was a little brief period between the Supreme Court case and the election where kind of like all the rules were stripped away except for the right-of-way. And I want you to know, I'm really conscientious about how the signs look, where they go. I bought a pretty expensive weed eater to keep your signs looking nice. If they're break, broken, or defaced, like a mustache, I go and I clean it off. So I want you to know that I'm conscientious about that so that they don't look trashy when we have them up. And regardless of whose signs I'm doing, every single one of them gets the same treatment. This year, I'm actually got both the yes and the no, and so they'll receive the same treatment. I don't share the yeses secrets with the no people, or the no secrets with the yes people, but they will not have to worry. All they have to do is call me, as some of you have, and say, "Got a defaced sign over here, I'm there. Got a sign crooked over there." I don't even allow them to be crooked. I'm anal when it comes to that. They have to look parallel to the world. And so I just want you to know that as far as me, I really do value the look that Prescott has, and, you know, I'm all for, not everybody is, but I'm all for holding off until after rodeo weekend, just so that they're not up. Now, it just depends on each group that's putting their signs up, they get the call on that, but that is my, that is my desire, is to let everybody stream into Prescott and just see the signs that are up there for the rodeo, and then on July 2nd, I'll be out like a demon, putting up signs. So I just wanted you to know, though, that I am conscious of your concerns, and it does matter to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Menore.
So Pete, I believe that mustache was on my sign.
Yes. Two of them.
Yeah, and I will tell you, I remember that the day after election, I said, "Pete, how soon can we get those signs down?" I think they were down within like three or four days.
I take them, and that was because I was in South Carolina with my Air Force daughter who was leaving for Afghanistan, she just got back, but anyway, otherwise, while everybody else is at the palace, I'm taking down signs.
He's out taking signs.
I'm down taking, taking down signs, because I like everybody to wake up the next morning and go, "It's over." So I hope you appreciate that, I really do care about that. Is that it?
Okay, thank you. Next.
Mayor and Council, Howard Mechanic, Prescott, and I had one question first before a comment. Mr. Blair mentioned how there was somebody who had, I believe, six signs on the right-of-way in front of their business, and he indicated that it's okay if they put it back on their property. So is it correct that there will be unlimited number of signs allowed on commercial property if this passes?
Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. No, it will be wide open at this point.
No to what? It will be unlimited signage. Yes, there'll be unlimited signs. Like Counselor Menore, I lived in Scottsdale for a considerable amount of time. I didn't consider it a sterile city. It was a beautiful city, and it still is because of their sign ordinance. People don't go and say they're losing their private property rights in the city of Scottsdale and just about anywhere else. There are sign codes in every jurisdiction that I know of. It's not a free-for-all, but that's what you're going to make it here, is unlimited commercial signs, including these obnoxious vertical banners that are blowing in the wind. Our town counts on most of its taxes, I guess, from tourism, is from what I read. Do tourists come up here for the historical feel of Prescott, or do they come up here to look at a used car lot? That's what you're going to turn this place into, is a used car lot. Businesses have the right to a sign on their business, they also have a right to a A-frame in front of their business. I think that's sufficient. And I'm asking you to defeat this proposal. If it does pass, let's get something that's workable for the community and not a free-for-all like what's going to happen here. Hopefully, there's something in between here because I just don't like driving up and down the street of a beautiful city and look like I'm in a, in a, in a used car lot. Thank you.
City Attorney, I think we are looking at further revisions of this going forward in the future, correct?
Yeah, we were going to take the wait-and-see approach. The moratorium will end.
And staff is tasked with coming up with revisions by the 1st of November.
Okay, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Feldmeyer in Prescott at 434 South Alarkin, and I came here to listen to this conversation you've had, and I want you to know, I appreciate the dialogue, I think it's important, and I appreciate the varied opinions that I've heard as well, because the challenge helps create the balance, and that's what I think we're going to end up with, because assuming that you passed the moratorium, of course, but what we've been subjected to for this campaign season, because I do a lot of work with Pete on signs for different organizations, candidates and the like, and have for 30 years or better, and I got to tell you, on my regular routine in preparing locations for this campaign exercise that we're about to begin, I was stunned to find out that the rules had changed, and it was absolutely unworkable from our end. And it's one thing to create a $75 fee, but the part that broke our back wasn't so much the dollar part, although I think it was certainly excessive, was the fact that you could only have one sign on a commercial piece of property. So where we had been accustomed to doubling up, if you will, for a candidate or a ballot issue on somebody's commercial piece of property in a location that didn't impact anyone other than that quick view that someone had when they were driving by, was gone. It evaporated. You couldn't even put up a sign on an empty piece of property that had "For Sale" on it, or a little small sign that said, "No Trespassing." That was it. You could get them to move the "No Trespassing" sign, and we could insert ours in place, but then when we took ours down, they'd have to come back in and put a $75 fee to put their sign back up again. What's unworkable. It's unworkable, and I hope what happens through this exercise is that we create a balance, because I don't want the area littered either, and I don't think that's what we're going to end up with, but I think as we work our way through this, and we have this conversation at a time where you invite Pete and myself and others to work through this, I think we'll achieve that balance that we need. So with that, I'll go back to my chair and say thank you for bringing it back.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council again. My name is Sandra Smith, 701 White Spark. We've visited this sign thing more than once. As far as putting signs, banner-type signs up on commercial properties, they don't create a problem. When you start putting out a bunch of sandwich board signs, though, they create a problem for alternative mobility users. Sidewalks are narrow enough, people, especially in the downtown area, have pieces of furniture stuck out on the sidewalks, they have all kinds of pieces of racks and all kinds of stuff out there. You go putting out three, four, five sign boards, there's no place to get through. We need a three-foot clearance, and it's just not there.
I'll address that, by the way, do you mind?
Go ahead.
With the moratorium, we're leaving in place the section that deals with the public health, safety, and welfare, including the ability to traverse a public sidewalk.
Okay.
Now, I do know that sandwich boards are only in the downtown areas, probably not in any other areas necessarily, so that will, that protection will remain.
Okay. So only one sign board like that, then?
Right.
Okay. And then the banners, as long as they're not blowing out in the sidewalks, or, now, some of those that, like the vertical ones, occasionally do blow out and create an obstruction, not usually, but once in a while. So they need to be back far enough from the sidewalk so that they're not going to blow in somebody's face while you're trying to get past. And the rest of them, as long as they're not where you can't see around them, they're fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and Council, my name is Phil Good, 3022 South Park. As you know, I am a candidate for City Council, and all of you are incumbents. For those of us that aren't, at one time, all of you were not incumbents, I think a distinction needs to be drawn between commercial signage and political signage. In my opinion, this is a pretty significant infringement of political free speech. Counselman Wilcox made the mention that campaigns could raise money to pay for these sign fees. There has been discussions in my campaign with some of our legal advisors that that may... may be a violation of election laws. For a campaign to give money to a separate individual, to have that individual take that money to pay for a permit to have a campaign sign put on, is similar to the criminal activity of Dinesh D'Souza, who gave money to a third party to give to another campaign. So if individual property owners have to pay a $75 fee for an individual sign, that has a pretty chilling effect on the ability for them to put a sign on their property. And those commercial properties are usually...properties are much more visible than a residential property. So clearly, there's a legal ability to restrict commercial signage, and that's certainly proven to be true. But when it comes to political speech and political signage, I think you need to look at a little more liberal application of that and to err on the side of freedom of speech when that line is drawn between public restrictions and regulations and private property rights and freedom of speech. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just address that for the public's education?
Yeah, go ahead.
Prior to the case, Reed versus Gilbert, the city did have distinctions between what kind of signs you can put on commercial properties. They included club-sponsored events, construction signs, home sale or rental signs, political signs, special event signs, and subdivision advertising signs. But the way we read Reed versus Gilbert and the way the rest of the cities are reading that, it precludes us to...from having content-based signs, and that's why we're here today.
Well, I know, and Reebok versus Gilbert was a condition of church, so you had a religious impact on that, too. But a number of Supreme Court cases have made a distinction between political speech and nonpolitical speech. So even though that aspect hasn't been challenged here, that doesn't mean that it couldn't be. Thank you.
Mayor Protan, you want to say something?
Yeah, since you were talking there, Matthew, don't we also kind of limit the freedom of speech if we say you can only have one sign, but you can't have two? What happens if a private property owner wants to respect two or three candidates, along with a ballot proposition or something like that on their commercial property? What have we just done to their free speech?
You've limited.
Thank you very much.
Doesn't mean it's unconstitutional.
I didn't say it was unconstitutional. What I said was you were limiting their free speech.
Any other public comment? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 4386-1595.
Second.
Have a motion second?
Before we do that, recall there was that one wrinkle regarding payback, and we thought maybe there may be some additional...
Before the 1st of January?
Yeah, additional people who paid before the 1st of January. So if you are inclined, I can read some proposed language that will clean that up so those folks get paid. So I'm going to read Section 3 as it exists, and I'll read Section 3 with some suggestive language if you're interested. So Section 3 currently states that the city manager or his designate is directed to refund all permit fees for temporary sign permits paid to the city from and after January 1st of 2017 through the date of this resolution. A proposed alternative could be, from the word "from" in the second sentence, strike and after January 1st, 2017 through the date of this resolution, and add the following language: "From the effective date of the most current Land Development Code section governing temporary signs on nonresidential property."
So moved with that addition.
Second with that addition.
Okay, have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes...I mean, sorry, it's five to one with Wilcox dissenting. Six to one.
Item B, please.
Approval bid and authorization of the sale of the crew transport buggies to the Los Angeles County Fire Museum in the amount of $25,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Just as kind of a refresher to your memories, should have lapsed since February when we first started bringing up this topic. Back in January, the fire department took it upon itself to identify some unneeded assets. Key to that, unneeded and unused assets were the two crew transport buggies formerly used by the Granite Mountain Interagency Hot Shot Crew. In the latter part of February, I had a stakeholders' group meeting at fire station number seven at the request of a variety of stakeholders, community stakeholders, representatives of family, representatives of the firefighters' association, and myself. Out of that, we tackled many topics, but most importantly was the...not most importantly, but at the point of today's discussion is to move forward and see what we could do to transfer or otherwise get these in the hands of the L.A. County Museum. To that end, to kind of fast-forward to May 1st through the 5th, we advertised the buggies for sale, the crew transport vehicles. With that, we did put in place some suggested preferences that, first, that they would not tarnish the memory of the Granite Mountain Interagency Hot Shot Crew members; second was, if at all practical, to keep one of those buggies in the Prescott regional area for use, if that was the sole deciding factor of the successful bidder. And then, basically, we advertised from May 1st to the 5th on the city's website, with bids closing on May 12th. May 12th came about, and there was a sole bidder in the Los Angeles County Fire Department Museum in the amount of $25,000. Little bit background on the museum. One of the board members is actually Captain Joe Wojcik, who's here with us this evening, along with a number of other representatives from the museum. But they also have a vested interest, because Joe's son was one of the Granite Mountain Interagency Hot Shot Crew members that perished on June 30th of 2013. I sincerely hope we can look forward and favorably upon this option, but with that, I'd be open to any discussions you have, or members of the museum are here as well.
Questions, comments for the council?
I have one.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Sorry, Jim.
That's okay.
I understand there will be a document of transfer, and is that correct?
That is correct. We'll do a standard transfer agreement of property.
Okay. And in that standard transfer agreement, do we have a sale in as-is condition and a waiver and release of liability?
We do. The real property will be sold as-is, and there will be, in our standard boilerplate, some indemnification, release, waiver liability language in there.
Okay. And in the agenda packet that we have, I know there were bid documents sent out, but we don't have a copy of those. And you briefly mentioned the condition that one of the buggies or buggies be physically located in Prescott?
Well, the advertisement for sale is what you're referring to, I believe, which was published on the website, laid out some general principles that we felt were important to a successful bid to be awarded. And having had a conversation with the successful bidder, I think they're able to fulfill those obligations, which was to hopefully keep one of those buggies up in the area. But I defer to the L.A. County Museum as a successful bidder as to what their ultimate intentions might be.
Well, I would like to see a condition in that document of transfer that one of the buggies be returned to be placed in Prescott at such time that we have an appropriate place for a display that honors the Granite Mountain Hot Shots. I believe the city needs to take the first steps to establish a museum here in Prescott, a Wildland Fire Museum with a special exhibit dedicated to the Granite Mountain Hot Shots, and the buggy would be an appropriate place for that.
Yes, Ms. Wilcox, I think that's most appropriate, but maybe, Joe, if you'd like to come up and perhaps speak to that, the opportunity to perhaps do something along that lines as the ultimate custodians of the property.
Thank you, Chief Wyler. Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here tonight. And to answer your question as far as bringing...to bring a buggy back for us, kind of putting a cart in front of the horse for us, because we weren't the successful bidder yet, so...but we're very...if we are the successful bidder on this, we're...that makes all the sense in the world to us. Nothing would do my heart more good than to bring, you know, to have one of the buggies in our brand-new state-of-the-art facility in Los Angeles than have one of them here in a, you know, your own state-of-the-art facility. I think that would be absolutely wonderful. We are...that would do my heart good. I would really like to see that.
Good. I really think it's time that the city begin working on building a museum or finding the property and working with all those interested in getting a museum going.
Our goal would be, if we're the successful bidder on this, it would be to stay in control of both of the units. Once we find a home for the second unit where it makes sense, where it'll be taken care of the way it needs to be taken care of, we'll still be the owner, though. So if you're able to put that together, we would absolutely be in favor. And again, I'm speaking on behalf of my board right now. I'm sure we'd have no issues with bringing one back home where it belongs.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for me? No?
Thank you.
I do, Joe. I just didn't know how far I'd let you get back there before I actually come forward. I did have late last...yesterday, had somebody call me with a concept for the ability to use the buggies down in the town of Yarnell to escort people back and forth to the memorial to sort of commemorate not only the town of Yarnell and what those people, but the visitors that come to visit the memorial that is there. So not putting contingencies or anything on anything, just asking the potential possibility of a buggy being used, the buggies that the firemen went to work in to be used to escort visitors and museum visitors back and forth to the site.
I understand. In all honesty and all due respect, I think that would be a horrible idea.
That's what I told him, Joe. But, you know, I need to get it on public record that I did ask that question.
And I think that I respect the fact that people want to be part of it, and I respect the fact that, you know, Yarnell took a big hit that day, and...but also, these buggies are very sacred, I think, and that they need to be protected for decades. If we start using them to transport people back and forth anywhere, you know, we're going to start taking the personal touches away from it. We're going to start beating them up, and then they're going to have to be restored. And our goal is to keep them in unrestored condition as they are for decades to come.
Thank you for your response, and please understand that I'm more or less morally obligated to ask that question.
I understand, and I'm sorry I had to say that. That's not my...I don't think that's a good idea.
I see Brendan out there, and I really don't want the buggies used in that way myself, but that was brought forward through somebody that lives here.
I understand.
Mayor Protan, I could also address that as well. I actually spoke with that particular party before the commencement of this afternoon's meeting, and they've withdrawn that interest anyways.
Oh, good. Maybe they listen to me.
I'll leave that up to the interested party.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Any from the public?
Mayor, council, public, my name is Dan Bates, and worked with the fire department here and was very involved with the tragedy happening also, as well as knowing the...all the hot shot members and our brothers. I just want to bring out, you know, just a thought of support on this, and definitely know that Joe and his family and the board will want to make sure that it's back home, if it can, at least one of them. I know that's really important to the family members. For myself, when I think of...I know they built a memorial down there in Yarnell, but to me, that's where our brothers perished, and it's a tragic day, and it's very tough for all of us. When I see the buggies, and I know it was huge for the families when the buggies came home, the buggies are a reminder of that's where the boys lived. That's where they did their jobs. That's where they shared their friendships. They grew together, and they love one another. And to me, it's a reminder. It's something that when I...my kids get to see it, I remind them that, you know, the great things that the Granite Mountain Hot Shots did, they were the only ones in the nation that was actually a city-operated hot shot crew. And so to me, that speaks not only to all the...our brothers on the Granite Mountain Hot Shots, but also to a fire department that supported that, to a city, to a city council that actually supported and brought that along, and all the great things they did in the time that they were here. So I think it's a great idea, and I can't think of anyone better that's going to make sure that that memory is lived on and celebrated the lives that they did live. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the bid and authorize the sale of the crew transport buggies to the Los Angeles County Fire Museum in the amount of $25,000. Second.
Okay, a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item C?
Adoption of ordinance number 5036-1576, authorizing the sale of surplus city property located on EZ Street to the Bosch Coast Revocable Trust in the amount of $228,000.
Mayor and Council, this is the rear track at EZ Street. Turn it up a little bit. This is not the site where the Granite Mountain Hot Shots facility was. It was on the parcel in the rear, and this was the high bidder, and he's fully qualified bidder, and I would recommend approval and acceptance of this.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 5036-1576.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Well, the place is cleared out, but I want to thank everybody that came today, and I have one quick founding fathers note from William Penn. Those people who will not be governed by God will be ruled by tyrants. Thank you for coming.